Good evening. Welcome to the board meeting of the Tacoma Public Schools for this day of July 13th, 2023. Would everyone please rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the people who worship this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puwahli tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puwahli tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. Thank you. General Counsel Benro, would you please call the roll?
Yes, President Bonbright.
Here.
Vice President Stroger.
Here.
Director Keating.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And Director Mikel Roy will be here shortly. She is stuck in traffic on the way from Seattle. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Sir.
Any comments, questions, additions to the agenda? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero, we have an agenda. All right. Item six, public hearings. Six point one, public hearing of the 2023-2024 budget. And before we dive into this, I'll just want to explain for the public who's maybe listening or who's here today, that this is a unique situation. Every couple, every once in a while, there's a topic that we hold a public hearing within a public hearing. So we are now calling to order this public hearing on our annual budget, and I will turn it over to the superintendent who can kick us off.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer before I make my final comments.
Mr. Razzle. And while she's fiddling with that, I will say that the Board of Directors will hold this public hearing today on the budget and that anyone may appear that's here, may be appearing in for or against any part of the proposed budget, and we're here to hear that. But the approval of the actual budget resolution will happen next month at our, the single meeting that we have in August, which is the 24th, and we will officially pass the budget that time right before the deadline of August 31st.
Thank you.
Now I'm turning it over.
Thank you very much. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is twofold. One, to inform the board and public of the budgeted use of resources that we have planned after having gone through our process of developing the budget. And that would include both interactions that we've had with the public as well as with our internal teams and ensuring that we're aligning ourselves to our strategic plan and that we're funding the resources in alignment with what we expect to be able to do, and what we, it's what you expect us to be able to provide to the public. We will also be presenting our preliminary budget so that you can see it for the four year projection, and that's a state requirement. We're required by the state to show a four year projection where we think we're going to end and an expenditure summary of, for each of the different funds that we budget for. We always start our budgeting process with the development of our guiding principles. These are principles that are set out by this school board. Thank you for the direction that you've provided us, and that has been used by, in and during all of the conversations that we've had around the development of the budget and in all of the decisions that we were making in order to identify how to come to a balanced budget. At the end of the budgets, at the end of the budget process, we have identified how we are using our resources in alignment with each of the strategic plan goals. You'll see that over the years, these numbers have changed slightly. Sometimes that's in relationship to different funding sources or different initiatives that may have been in place during periods of time. This year, you'll see that academic excellence declined slightly, but early learning increased slightly. As an example of that, to give some context around how some of these numbers might fluctuate from year to year, we've added some transitional kindergarten programs, and those had previously been something that we provided through an, excuse me.
Grant through OSPI?
Grant through, grant through OSPI, and it was the, Chris, where are you? Peer model preschool program. Thank you. I've been on vacation, I'm a little rusty coming back. And so those resources, as we shift around different components of funding, or we identify that some of those things go within specific packages as we're calculating the budget, those numbers might fluctuate slightly. And that's what you're seeing represented in these minor shifts between different pillars of our strategic initiatives.
I'd also just like to add very quickly that it may seem kind of misleading sometimes when you're saying, well, you're only spending 2.3% of your total budget on health and safety. Often, our goals have much crossover amongst them. So we ask the team to start to identify some level of first level priority or direction, but many of our goals have crossover. And so as you're looking at this, this is just an indicator of where those are, how they are targeted, all of them are targeted to the strategic plans in that space.
So maybe an example of that superintendent might be, for example, would nurses be under the academic excellence or would they be under health and safety? Is that just a, that's an example?
Right. But yeah, and they're, so they're in the health and safety category, but they really could fit and associate themselves with any, like, you know, a number of those categories.
Right.
Something like councils may have crossover in both areas and spirits.
So to dig in a little deeper into the preliminary budget, we are required to hold a public hearing. This will be the public hearing for our budget. As Director Bonmari indicated, we won't be adopting our budget until August 24th. So we are providing some time in between so that people, if they have concerns or questions, can bring those questions forward, and we can work through any communications that may need to occur around questions that people have, interactions that people want to have regarding the budget they haven't had a chance to have already. And we'll start with going through each of the individual funds that we have. So we have different checking accounts here at the school district, and these are defined by the state accounting manual. We don't have discretion over which ones we utilize. We're required to utilize them in a very specific format. And so they're identified here on this, in this slide. The general funds are operating funds. This is a checking account that we use for all of our general operations, anything having to do with what's happening during the regular school day, after school programming, early morning programming, whatever that may look like. That's where we're going to find all of our resources going in and out of that checking account. Then we have a debt service fund, or debt service fund is used to make payments on our bond, repayments. So we have about a little under $900 million in outstanding bonds. We have a tax that we collect, the tax resources go into the debt service fund, and then we make payments on the bond, similar to how you make a mortgage payment at home. That's what's going in and out of that fund. The Associated Student Body Fund are funds that are held on behalf of our students for student-specific purposes. They define how they're going to be utilized. We just hold them in advance for them. The Transportation Vehicle Fund is used to make purchases of yellow school buses or major repair store yellow school buses. And then we have trust funds. Trust funds might be scholarship funds that individual donors may provide to the school district on behalf of very specific circumstances, how they want those dollars sent out. These are actually not our resources. We don't budget for these monies. We just hold them on behalf of others. The board would approve an appropriate trust fund agreement before we would take those resources, and we would have specific instructions on how we would utilize those dollars. So they, we do have a checking account for them so that we can manage and maintain them, but we don't actually do any re, like, expectation, we don't have any expectation around how we manage them.
And I can add to that, that we as a board see that list every year, and we see, you know, so we're keeping an eye on that, even though they're not our funds. We're helping maintain this.
And then we have a capital and technology levy fund. So any of the levy dollars that we collect for building, making buildings, building buildings, refurbishing buildings, or major improvements, as well as our technology levy, those resources go into the capital and technology levy fund, and we account for them there. So we budget for the five funds other than the trust fund, and that's what we're going to be covering this evening. So up in the upper right-hand corner, you can see that which slides are associated with which of the different types of funds that we'll be discussing tonight. And our first is the general fund. So on our general fund, our anticipated revenues and other sources of funding for the next year, 22, excuse me, the 23, 24 school year, will be $552,327,748. Very specific number, right? Expenditures we're anticipating will be $554,285,289, and that that would leave us with a fund balance drawdown of 1.957,541. We have been working to right-size our budget, and this is a conversation that we'll continue to have. Our expenditures need to be in alignment with the revenues that we're receiving from the state and other sources. And so in this circumstance, the fund balance drawdown are resources that are coming out of our savings account. When we had planned this year, in the 22, 23 year, we had planned to utilize nearly all of those resources, and so we don't have many resources left to use out of our savings account. We had planned that, that was what we expected. We're anticipating that we'll have a couple of million dollars to utilize towards next year's budget. If that doesn't come to fruition, the superintendent and I will have conversations around how we'll work to find savings in the 23, 24 school year as we progress through and work to make sure that we're staying in alignment with the expenditure limitation that we list here. Because of the way the state requires us to adopt our budget, when we identify what the expenditures are, 554 million and some change, we can't exceed that number in our expenditures for next year without coming back to you and suggesting, here's our plan for how we're going to pay for any of those resources if we do go beyond that, and we have to have an upward adoption around that expenditure change. We can spend less than that, and we can collect more revenues, but if we're going to change that expenditure number, we have to bring that back to the board. We do have a fund balance reserve expectation, so our fund balance reserve is planned at 5% of our revenues, defined in our policies. We usually have that on hand for emergencies, any kind of bond, or to maintain our bond ratings, any kind of extraordinary events that we may see, and to ensure that we have enough resources for any kind of cash flow fluctuations that happen throughout the year. And we typically use our fund balance for several things. Sometimes that's for enrollment changes or program impacts. We use it for carryover of resources. Some of our programs are required to carry over resources from one year to the next year. We plan for that in the budget. We take those resources into our fund balance and expend them out again in the next year. It's typical practice. So when we're looking at the details of the budget, on our revenue side, 70.8% of our budget is from state resources. That's a little over $391 million. The next largest area would be our local levy. It makes up about 14% of our budget at $77.9 million. And then followed by our federal resources, which is about 8.7% of our budget at $48 million. And then we do have one more year of ESER funding planned, and we think that we'll have about $14 million left in the current year to expend on resources and expectations for the 23, 24 budget, and that that will be the end of our ESER resources. That's 2.6% of our budget. And so when those resources go away, the expenditures associated with those will either need to be absorbed into the budget, and we'll need to make room for that with, by eliminating other expenditures, or we'll need to eliminate those things that are funded in ESER. So that's a challenge that we're working towards in the next year. And then we have 1.9 million dollars, oh, excuse me, 1.9% of our budget, $11 million towards local non-tax. Those are things that go where we build other school districts. And then 1.8% of our budget, or $10 million, in other revenues, which could look like interest payments on money that we have in the bank. On the expenditure side of things, our largest expense is certificated salaries, makes up about 46.4% of our budget, followed by classified salaries, 20% of our budget, that's $113 million, and then 94%, excuse me, $94 million, 17% of our budget is in benefits. Those three together, the salaries, benefits, excuse me, cert and classified salaries and benefits, it comes to 84% of our budget. And the remainder is then for supplies, materials, and other capital equipment costs. As I mentioned, we're required to do a four-year budget. This is our preliminary four-year budget. You'll see 23, 24 is representative of everything I talked about so far. And then we project out our revenues based on what we think we understand about the complexities of the next couple of years, you know, removing ESER, changing our enrollments based on the projections from our homographer, and we've developed what those revenues look like, and then we've matched our expenditures to that because we don't anticipate that we'll have fund balance available in those future years, and we think that we need to pair them for a balanced budget. And so that gives us kind of a target of what those expenditures could look like in the next four years. Moving on to our other funds, in the debt service fund, we're planning for $72.78 million of expenditures. As I mentioned, we have just under $900 million of current outstanding bonds. On the Associated Student Body, we'll have 4.88 million roughly expenditures authority that we will ask for your approval on in August, assuming nothing changes in that timeframe between now and then. The Transportation Vehicle Fund, we're anticipating the purchase of six buses, that's $901,000. And then capital and technology levy, we're anticipating up to $154 million of expenditures to maintain and upgrade and refurbish or replace current buildings, as well as make technology purchases. And we've done a four-year on this as well. These are a little more squishy on what the next four years looks like. We have some ideas of what the revenues could look like, expenditures are something that we'll have to keep tracking and monitoring, but we're required to present it, and so we have. So after having said all of that, we still have some engagement opportunities. We do have information out on our website. We did about a budget calculator early on where people have been able to provide feedback. We have the draft of our presentation for this evening, as well as other information posted out on our website currently, and we will be doing a recorded presentation that we can push out with, onto our website so that people can engage, as well as, there's always a feedback mechanism on our budget webpage where you can slip in a question if you wanted to ask a question about what we have going on with the budget or any specific questions around anything you've seen in the budget or heard. Please feel free to engage with us. You can always also reach out to Kristin and I if there are any questions from this group. And our adoption plan for August 24th, we anticipate having no concerns bringing that forward to you. And that's what I had to share for the evening. Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, before we open it up for public comment, anyone up here on the dials have any questions or comments?
I just was wondering, earlier in the spring, we had a budget advisory committee. Can you just, for those who may not be familiar or listening in, can you talk a little bit about that committee and their contributions?
Yeah, thank you. And we did submit for a budget advisory committee. We put out recommendation, or we put out a request for people to join. I can't remember the total number, but it was like, I think, 26 people that ended up engaging in the process with us. We did a two-part series, an educational part, where we talked to them about how we get our resources and how we spend our resources and what that looks like, to inform them and educate them on what our budgeting process looks like and how complex the financial environment is in school districts. And then we followed that with a series of meetings with individual program managers who presented information about their budgets and their programming to help guide the committee members around helping make recommendations to us. From there, we sat with the advisory committee and developed some formalized recommendations and presented that to you in a Friday report and in a formal presentation packet of recommendations from that committee. It was a pretty robust series of meetings, several hours, each meeting over several weeks. I think we had five formal meetings, and then we had an online meeting after that. So they invested a good 15 hours into participating in our process, and really, it was an incredible thing to have all of these really financially engaged people. So we don't usually get that. People aren't really that interested in what I do. So.
Oh, we're very interested in what you do, Ross.
You are. I appreciate you. So it was, you know, that they were able to provide us with some feedback, and we presented that to the cabinet. Cabinet was able to engage with that information, and we did make some recommendation changes based on some of what we saw in those feedback items. Thank you.
Anybody else have comments or questions? Okay.
Madam President, before we turn it over, I do want to give a special shout out to our budget team.
I have one more slide. I am so sorry.
Or I will turn it over to our CFO to acknowledge our budget.
I'm so sorry. Yeah, I go on vacation, it's like nothing happened while I was gone. While I was on vacation, this entire team made the budget presentation happen, made the budget balance. So the, it takes a village to balance the budget. It was not just the budgeting team, but the board set grounds and guidelines and gave us direction. The superintendent and the cabinet team worked diligently over a series of four-hour meetings. I think we had seven four-hour meetings to work through the details of the budget as a collective. But budget and program managers participated in the budgeting by priorities process. They spent hours training and submitting proposals and requests about how they wanted to spend their money and why, what they did tied back to our strategic initiatives. And we reached out to the committee on a number of different occasions, either through the budget calculator or the budget advisory committee, or having people just generally reach out to us about our budget. And then we had our entire budget team led by Kristin Bell give all the very serious details. I don't know how she didn't have a stroke while I was gone. I'm super thankful that she didn't, she's really.
She looks a little tired.
She is exhausted, and I will be encouraging her to take most of August off, so. Super appreciative. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you CFO.
Yeah. Well, thanks absolutely to the staff. I know how hard this was, and especially in a year where we're trying to right-size after all that ESER money came in, and, you know, we have a reduction in student enrollment, which of course is the big driver. And I think one of the things that for me is so important to understand is that 84% of our entire budget, which is almost a billion dollars when you add everything to that, but of the general fund anyway, 84% of the general fund is, is spent on staffing, that working with our, with our kids. So it's pri, it's the priority in the right place. And so thank you for following our, our guidance around to putting the priority in the classroom, so we appreciate that. All right, so now we will move on to the public hearing part, and I am not sure, did people fill out the same blue cards, Malik? Or did we have, I guess I should, or the folks that, because we have two public hearings today, tonight. One is on the budget, and that's where we are right now. And then later on, we'll have the public comments on the other items on the agenda. So for those of you who are here to speak on the budget, I'll turn it over to our general counsel, and he'll call folks up.
Yeah, we only received one card that could potentially apply to the budget conversation, and that's from Christopher Nordman, but this also might be general public comment. It wasn't specified on the card.
Mr. Nordman, is the comment for the budget or for the, the general comments in a bit?
Um, it's about cutting a program. Would that count towards the budget?
Yeah, I think it would.
Yep.
So come on up. And please, if you wouldn't mind, reintroduce yourself so we can.
Of course. This, okay. My name is Christopher Nordman. I'm a member of the class of 2023 from Stadium High School, and I want to speak for a brief second about the class that I feel very confident, thank you, very confident about at Stadium, which is multimedia two, more popularly known as Tiger News, the school's AV and technical class. The teacher is retiring this year, Mr. Randall Cruz, and there has been talk of cutting the class altogether, and I think that would be a very, very bad decision. This class, the videos it produces, it encourages and facilitates school spirit, as well as boosts morale around the school on a more general stance. Let's check. Students in this class learn virtually everything there is to know about producing videos and how to work the media landscape and making quality content for the public. I myself have learned many, many things from this class, and I'm happy to say it helped me get to where I am going to college, that being Loyola Marymount University in Los Angeles, California, School of Film and Television. I submitted part of a few of my Tiger News videos to their Board of Admissions, and I was admitted the very next day after presenting those. I was also admitted to USC, but that's a different story. I think.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And they didn't offer me as much money. No, no, no. That's a long story, I'll tell you that's later. But anyhow, I think it would be a very brave mistake to eliminate this class, especially as Seattle and the Greater Pacific Northwest is becoming a very large part of Hollywood's landscape across the United States. Who could forget the films made here? Ten Things I Hate About You, I Love You to Death, Three Fugitives. This area of the country is becoming very vital to the film industry, and I think giving kids a free education just to get them a start will inspire them to go bother in this, and we could have many, many Steven Spielbergs come out of the Tacoma area. I just don't, my brother, God bless his soul, 16 years old, well, he's not dead, it was his birthday yesterday. Oh, I have a birthday, I'm on a roll tonight. He took over for editing every video, entire news, every single video. He was the chief editor, and he loves us very much, and I think he's going to go very far in life, and I think this is going to give him a chance to do that. So I implore you to rethink cutting Tiger News. Thank you for your time. I'm sorry about all the humor. Thank you very much.
It's great. Thank you, Christopher. Okay, I'll ask if anyone else is in the audience that would like to speak on a budget item or having to do with the passage of annual budget. Hearing none. General Counsel, did we read, or actually, I don't know if it's the board secretary, did we receive any written comments on budget?
No.
We did not. Okay. So having said that, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on budget? All right. So I hereby conclude this, in this budget hearing, and we will move back into the regular order of business on our regular budget, I mean, our regular agenda. So thank you, everyone, for that. So we have moved on to item number seven, recognition of staff, students, and community. Seven point one, recognition of Washington School Safety Organization School Security Officer of the Year. Superintendent?
I'm going to turn it over to our general counsel, because I think we do seven point one first, Madam President.
What I do.
We went to seven point two, and we're all excited for seven point two. And we have passed officially seven point one, but let's give it a second.
Yes, seven point one, state holidays and civic observances. This is for the entire month of July, this being the only meeting in July. We have one state holiday this month, and that's on July 4th, which is Independence Day. On Independence Day, this is the annual celebration of nationhood for the United States, and it commemorates the passage of the Declaration of Independence by the Continental Congress on July 4th, 1776. There are no other state holidays or civic observances.
All right. Now, seven point two, the recognition of the Washington School Safety Organization School Security Officer of the Year.
Thank you, Madam President. We're very excited tonight. We tried to leave the name off it for a little bit of surprise, but I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pace to celebrate one of our own amazing team members.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve statewide award acknowledgement for CSO Jordan Potts from Hunt Middle School. I'm going to introduce to you Mike Rupert, Director of Security, who has a few comments
I think it's safe to say our surprise works. Mr. Rupert.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. I'm Mike Rupert, Director of Safety and Security, and thank.
Mike, were you leading in the mic?
Thank you to everybody that support Jordan on this, this award tonight. We had his principal, Ken Messerschmidt, kept a great secret. It was tough. On that whole aspect, we got the whole family here. So let me give you a little background about Jordan. Jordan, I met Jordan probably around 2020, and he told me, he came up to me and said, hey, I want to be part of, I want to be part of the safety and security team. And I said, well, what are you doing now? He's a, he was a parent educator, and both that parent educator doing, doing his job. And I said, okay. And I said, well, I could probably, you know, let's, let's see if we can get you put in the door, get you in spark time or something. And then he goes, yeah, I'll, I'll do anything. I just, I just want, I want to, I want to support kids in a different capacity. And I said, okay. So that's about 2020. I know he put in a few times before he got selected for an interview. So in 2022, he finally came through where I could actually see him, and we interviewed him. And from that day on, it was, it was unanimous with my staff. We got him down to SODA, our School of the Arts, that's where he first started as a CSO two, or excuse me, as a CSO. And then from there, he eventually, an opportunity came up with Hunt Middle School, and that's where he is currently. And so I get this thing across my email one day, it said, hey, for this, this, this award from the WSSO. my email one day. It said, hey, for this, this, this award from the WSSO. And I started reading, and I'm like, well, this is Jordan Potts. I'll fill this out right now. I started filling it out. Long story, Jordan. I sent it to the, to the award committee. And of course, about a week later, they called and said, hey, your guy is going to get the state award out of everybody. So I want to introduce. I want to bring up the president of the WSSO, who is going to present this award to Jordan, Ms. Katie Gillespie.
Good evening, Board. My name is Katie Gillespie, and I have the honor of serving as the Washington School Safety Organization Board President. On behalf of the WSSO Board, I have the great pleasure tonight to award a member of the Tacoma School District with the Washington School Safety Security Officer of the Year Award. Just a little bit of background for you guys. The Board did not award an SSO of the Year in coming out of COVID-19. Our Board wanted to focus on hosting our first conference after COVID-19 impacted us all. But in twenty twenty-three, the Board said we needed to recognize the hard work that our security officers and our ESSR's are putting in every day to ensure safety for our students. We put a board committee together, three members. We had a questionnaire with about ten questions. They had a storyboard. The committee said this was not an easy decision when they looked at the award. But they also told me, SSO Jordan Potts was everything we wanted in an award winner.
All right.
That he embodied what the Washington School Safety Organization wanted and stood for. So for the Board and Jordan, these are a few of the comments that the Board received. Jordan embodies the position as an outstanding steward representing the finest in building, with positive relationships with students, staff, and the visiting public. Jordan continued to bridge the gap between law enforcement and our own behavioral support staff by offering students an opportunity to speak with an adult and establish a future relationship that will potentially act as a preventative measure. Jordan has a dynamic personality that is charismatic, caring, kind. People are drawn to him, and kids want to seek him out for help. Jordan is teamed with students, staff, and finding areas for improvement in keeping schools safe in the Tacoma School District. Jordan is an informal leader amongst his peers and continues to support and improve not only his campus, but all of the schools in the Tacoma School District. Jordan, it is my honor to present you with the two thousand twenty-three Washington School Safety School Security Officer of the Year.
Jordan, where do you think you're going?
Sticking back to my seat.
No. So were you surprised?
Completely surprised.
I love the pace.
I just want to thank everybody, you know, this opportunity I have. Thank you. Thank you for bringing me on. Thank you for the support. I couldn't have done it without the team. You know, we're a team in the district, and it's just something that I've taken on from playing sports. And when it's a team, you know, it takes a village to raise, you know, a child. And so we all got to come together, and that's just what I do. And I love what I do. And just, I'm thankful. I'm thankful for the opportunity. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone here.
Jordan, if you'd like, if we bring your award up, and we can get a picture, and actually, if you have family members you would like up, or whoever you want.
Anybody who wants to come up can come up.
It's gonna be a big picture.
Let's go, Thunder. Come on up and support him. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could go ahead and just crowd in real quickly. We'll do thank yous afterwards. Go ahead and squeeze in, try to get in the middle. I'm going to try to fit this.
Zoom up a little bit.
Please, try to get in. Yeah, everyone look up here. I'm going to do a panoramic shot, so I'm going to move the camera. Okay, ready? One, two, three. All start smiling, 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 smiling. Okay, one more, just regular here. All smiling. Jordan, one, two, three, Jordan.
I'm going to my speakerboard. You guys can all sneak that in.
You've clearly got a blind spot. All right. Well, that was fun. All right. Moving on to item number eight.
Well, Madam President, if we could wait just a moment. If anybody wants to go ahead and leave, celebrate Jordan, then we'll get back into the next piece.
It's gonna be hard to trick him next year.
Yes.
Malik, we'd have to hold it in a whole different place.
Yeah, maybe hold it at Hunt.
Okay, I think we're ready, Madam President.
All right. Well, I'm turning it over to you for eight point one, grading regulation two four two zero R, regulation updates.
So I have Dr. Josh Darling joining us, who's our Director of DART. We wanted to come back to you. We've had a number of conversations, a lot of community input, a lot of listening sessions, and you have adopted a policy. And one of the things you asked us to do is give you some updates on the process of the regulation. We have collected ongoing feedback. We've made some adjustments. And Josh is here to share with you the actual regulation and its content. I'll remind you, you don't officially adopt regulations unless they are officially a part of your Board Business Series. And so this is for information tonight.
Hi, Josh. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you, Madam President, Board, and everyone here. I really appreciate each of you. You were all part of this process. Started spring of last year, and we had a chance to visit all the students. And I believe that visiting and doing those listening sessions with our students, with our staff, with our families, really helped us get to the bottom of the table today. So the board policy, some of this is review. I know that we had adopted our policy twenty four twenty. And so some of the main key pieces for the consistent grade scales, making sure that grading is reflecting learning, not attendance, behavior, or attitude. Students, schools, working with families regarding late work and missing work. And then no one assignment will be able to have a greater impact than one full letter grade on the student's semester grade. Teachers will continue to add report card comments for each grading period. And finally, that if a student is going to get an E or not pass the class, they cannot have that happen unless the family has been communicated with. In enough time, the students can actually make that right. So those were our key elements from our policy, and we made sure that those were reflected in the regulation as well. I know this is real small for the folks in the back, but if you have students in Tacoma schools, not a lot's changed as far as the grading scales. For elementary, you still have the four, three, two, one scale. And for secondary, you still have letter grades. You still have the GPA. Many of us have GPAs, same exact thing. Percentages look very, very traditional. And these policies have not changed our grading scales. We do have an eight-point scale for our IB, so that stays consistent as well. For the folks in the back, I know it's really small, but the major takeaway from our listening sessions were retakes, revisions, and item corrections. Whenever students, we asked them what they liked, the very first thing they said was, we love retakes, we love item corrections, we love revisions, we love to be able to improve on our learning. So we really wanted to honor those voices. We also heard from teachers and from families every single time this topic was brought up. So we really wanted to make sure that our regulation, as well as policy, but really our regulation, got into the details of retakes, revisions, and item corrections. So all students will be able to have a retake, a revision, or item correction, for their summative assessments or assignments. And it is the teacher's discretion if they would like to have them have more than one. The retake, revision, item corrections will be accessible by all students, and the regulation, again, will outline that process. Once the student gets their feedback or their grade, then the clock starts ticking. And then they have ten days. Within that ten days, they have a chance to do the retake, revision, or item corrections. Again, it is the teacher's discretion if they want to extend beyond that ten day. Teachers may require students to provide additional evidence of learning before the reassessment. So what have you done to make sure that you've learned before you do your retake? And then also, the retakes must be worth the same maximum grade of what they retook. So if their assessment was four points, then the retake would also be four points within that ten-day scale. And the retake is a replacement, not an additional task. So it's not as though this is your grade, and then you do a retake, and it's over here. It actually is for the exact same grade. In addition to the grading scales, the retakes, revisions, item corrections, and then also keeping attendance and discipline out of the grades, our key points for twenty four twenty are is that all families, kindergarten through twelfth grade, will now have live grade books. So that way, you'll have real-time information to be able to support your child with what is happening. And they're going to be getting that through synergy. And then we get a little more information about how that works through parent view through synergy. We also wanted to make sure that grading is a balance between the formative and summative. So your practice, your homework, it's going to count for twenty percent of their grade, whereas the end of assessments, or the summative assessments, or final projects will count for eighty percent. Teachers will provide feedback for submitted work without penalty of losing points when it's turned in within ten school days. And no, again, this is a theme that keeps coming brought back up. No one assignment can have a greater impact of more than one full letter grade over the course of the semester. So you cannot have it where you have a final exam, and you didn't do well, and it all of a sudden drops you more than one letter grade. And to help communicate the progress with families, elementary teachers will continue to have the free text where they're typing in for the elementary report cards. And the secondary, middle school, and high school will have two comments that will be required. But synergy also allows the middle school and high school to do free texts as well, similar to the elementary. And again, I know there were a lot of questions from the community and from some of the, from the folks earlier on worried about traditional grades and GPAs in college. Nothing has changed in that. For six through twelve, traditional letter grades and GPAs will calculate as they always have done in the past. So now the work begins, which is the implementation and the communication. And so we're going to be working with our communication partners, our communication department currently, for a communication plan to share with our families at the start of the year. They also will be getting synergy, parent view information, so that way they'll have the tools to be able to see that live grade book. For our Tacoma educator support, we are currently, we have been working on an internal page of this entire process. Right now, the policy and the regulation are on that page. For those folks in the audience or at home that would like to see the regulation, it's on our policy and regulation page. But an easy way is to go to the grading practices and project implementation page or project page, and they'll be able to see that there. Once that internal page of how to do each of the different elements of the regulation are complete, we'll be sharing that with principals. So that way, we'll be able to get going on those next steps. The next steps, as far as implementation goes, it's going to be principals, instructional coaches, and the team I work with, the DART coaches will collaborate together and support those teachers they work with on this implementation to make sure they have the best practices and supports needed to make sure this becomes the way it is done in Tacoma. Any questions?
Well, first, before we go into questions, I just really want to thank you, Josh, and the whole team. I know this, this has been a year-long process, as you said, and we've participated throughout the year in different ways. And it was extraordinary to be able to have those listening sessions with the students and really hear what they wanted. And then to see that reflected in this final product, I just have to commend you and the team for listening to every, because I know it was hard. The teachers were sometimes at odds with what the students wanted, but it looks like it all rounded out and every, it seems very fair. So I want to thank you and the whole team for the work that you did.
Thank you.
So does anyone up here have a question, a comment for Josh? Vice President Stroger?
Just one point of clarification. You mentioned free text. And just for those who might not know what that is, on the actual report card itself, there is a spot where teachers can provide student-specific comments versus codes.
Yes. For elementary and for secondary, they both have the opportunity to type in and write. Some of them write very long details, some write shorter. They'll have the opportunity to do both. Secondary didn't always have that ability. They will now.
Yes. So synergy, so it seems, and correct me if I'm wrong, please. So it seems like with the, with us implementing synergy, that this is allowing a lot of this additional communication for us, for teachers to be able to communicate to students and families. Is that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the implementation of synergy allows the work that we're doing here to be done, to be done in a more efficient and effective way in comparison to where we were before.
With school, in comparison to school.
Yes, with a grade book of school compared to synergy, yes.
So when we write policy and regulations, we don't write it based on the tool itself. So you are one hundred percent correct. The tools, as they advance, enhance. We looked at your anti-racist policy. We looked at what is evidence-based practices. We brought educators together to say, so what are the pieces? And then we made sure the tool could deliver on those pieces as well in that space. And so as technology advances, those opportunities, in the opportunity minus the free text, we could do that with several platforms as far as common grading scales, what is the practice of retakes and consistencies in those. And so even for tomorrow, if our tool had to change, the regulation would be relevant.
And, and I just wanted, like, the consistency, I know, like, when we did our listening sessions, like, the having more consistency across the board was whether it was with a tool, whether it was through practices and implementation, like, that was something. So I just appreciate that that is reflected. And then I just wanted to add a comment that as I was reviewing this in preparation for the meeting, I had my recent senior, who just, or my graduate, read through it. And I was like, I'd just be curious about what you thought about this, the regulations. And what her takeaway was, she really appreciated the retakes, she said, because it wasn't consistent from teacher to teacher. And so throughout her experience, and she always appreciated because she didn't always do well. And testing was not necessarily a strength of hers. That didn't mean she didn't understand the information. It was just having to communicate that information in a test form. So I just wanted to say, A, Anna Lum was very appreciative of just the details and the approach that went into, again, that consistency in, across the board for grading practices. So thank you. And I know it was not you, and it was a collective.
No, I think we had a whole team that was part of this whole process. And from all the members of the team, those that had a chance to be part of the listening sessions and get that really what is qualitative data, to be able to make a more informed decision rather than making assumptions based on numbers, you need both. And so this, that process and being able to listen to their voices definitely made a better product.
And I'm sorry, it just, that just made me think of, like, the whole purpose of why we set this as a goal was around, like, looking at our grading practices in affiliate set this as a goal was around like looking at our grading practices in affiliation to mental health of our students. And so that consistency also just ties into that. So I'm, I'm really excited for just how this will impact, positively impact our students.
And I guess my comment, which is along those lines, is this is a change for some teachers. They're, you know, they, they may not have been in the habit of allowing or even encouraging the retakes. What are we, what are we going to have in place so when we hit the ground in September and it really starts the semester off that teachers are aware of and understand the expectation?
Yeah. So what we're going to have in place, the first piece is we will have synergy in place that actually is completely aligned with this. And so the practices that are part of this policy, we will make sure that that is set up in synergy so they're in complete alignment. We've already done that process because the team that I work with, the SIS team, is part of DART as well, also is doing synergy. So it's all completely aligned in that way. That's one step. The bigger lift, if you will, is going to be around professional learning or grading practices. We have grading per equity, we have grading from the inside out, we have 15 fixes for broken grades. We have a number of different books and resources. But when it comes down to adult learning, it's going to be around how do we do this practice in the classrooms every day for our students? And we need to do that as a team consistently. So our principals are in line with our instructional coaches, in line with teaching and learning. So that way we completely give wraparound support. And we also make sure that we're addressing that these things are happening. In addition to that, we want to make sure that our families and our students know what their new rights of the learner are. So that way they can say, yeah, this isn't in line with what I'm supposed to be able to do. And then we have those conversations as needed.
And so Superintendent, I'm, I'm assuming that if a parent or a student has an issue with maybe one of their teachers who doesn't seem to be following the rubric, the way it's been set up, that their first point would be to see, to talk with the teacher and if that, then the super, then the principal? Is that right?
That's correct. And I just, I, I want to use this moment, and I know we're talking at a very high level, is you have a lot of educators that have been doing this for years. You have a lot of educators in Tacoma that have been doing this for years. And so when you unpack this, there may be some, and those tools that we've developed are important for folks to have resources. We often, every year we get new educators and so maybe they don't know these things. But we've had the same grading practice for policy, not practices per se, but policy for over 20 years. And so for all of our educators, many of them have been doing these highly effective practices for years. And so their colleagues will be there also for supports in there. But it starts with policy, it gets to the regulations, then there are supports, questions. Always start with your classroom teacher. If there is questions in their practice, making sure everyone's under the same page and understanding. And then yes, they would go if there was a concern at any level to their principal next. And then obviously to us at the central office with their school director as a third step.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Superintendent Garcia, I was just wondering for the next steps, communication and implementation. I was wondering if in the fall, this team can come back and kind of present the communication to families? Because I think when we hear live, we think like 24/7 action, teachers are adults with jobs and sometimes we clock out. So you know, if I'm on my phone at 10:00 PM, is it that live or just like coming back and explaining what that communication strategy will look like? I think we do a really good job putting things on our website, but I think when it's, it's heard, it can be replayed. And so those with like an audio, it'll be easier for more people to get that information. Do you think that's a possibility?
Absolutely, Director McElroy. And I just want to add to your comment is there is not an expectation that our teachers are working that 24/7, although I do recognize that many of them do put in that time and effort and their support. What live means is when the teacher inputs it, it is being able to be seen by the student and the, the family at that point. And so there is that opportunity, but that clarification is important. We're not asking our folks, you know, I know as a, as a parent, sometimes I'm like, hey, where are you at? Son or daughter with your grades and you send an email. And sometimes as parents, we have to take a step back and recognize that we're all human beings. I ask families anytime that, you know, give folks, you know, 48 hours to respond to you, even if there's a question or concerns. Our classroom teachers have a lot on their plates. And at that point, a friendly nudge is always welcome. And then we'll, we'll in that, be in that space. So we will work on an update for you on how our communication is going.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Oh, Director Leon.
Yeah. Thank you. This is, this is for the right direction to go for equity and better evaluation, just knowing what, how kids are learning and let them understand where maybe they're doing well or maybe they need to put more, put more effort and learn some other topics. I do have, actually have a bunch of questions from staff and parents and some from students and some from me. I'm just, they're all kind of, you know, just going to give you an order of the presentation here. And some of these have been talked about before and you've mentioned some of these in your presentation already. I have heard from some teachers around, they think it's positive change, but their concerns about the balance of work on regrading and regrading, where they're going to get support for their regrading time. So I'm just going to give you one question at a time. How, well, is there a plan for how that might be handled? Some are already doing it, obviously. So many questions might be coming from folks that haven't done this as much.
So each teacher is in charge or has the ability of how much work they assign in relation to the standards. And so it is not a set piece of, so what does that look like for support in there? What we tried to do based on educator feedback and others is set a reasonable target. There's some accountability on the student's side. The student has to demonstrate that there's evidence that they have participated in relearning. I know as I, as a student, I would just come back to you and say, okay, now I'm ready. Okay, but what did you do in effort to prepare for that? So we put shared ownership back on to the student. We try to put a timeline in there to provide supports because sometimes students will say, well, three weeks later, four weeks later, I'm ready now or I want to do it now. And that's not fair to the educator that has 150 students on their caseload and that ongoing pieces. And so we will work with, there's supports that Josh has mentioned inside the school in those supports, but we try to put parameters to also support the educators that it wasn't a open-ended, end of the semester, I want to make up all 35 assignments that I've missed.
So I heard you say is maybe also give less assignments to grade and then there's this timeline of the 10 days to not overwhelm them at the end of the semester.
There's a recognition that education at all levels is complex and nuanced and that the educators have to have the freedom to how, determine what is the best way to assess. Now, we, we spend a lot of time in professional development and practices around how to assess. That educator has to, to feel comfortable that that student has that knowledge. And so it is a case by case on how much they choose to assess based on their standards.
Next one is I've heard some consternation from some parents and some fact, some staff around this. What's the definition of academic dishonesty? And if someone is dishonest or cheats on the second time they take the test, how many times are they able to give them a second or third test? I don't know the answer to that. Example of something like that?
Yeah. When it comes to behavior and choices, just like we would if you made a, a poor choice and got into a fight, that wouldn't impact your grade. Making a poor choice academically, as far as academic dishonesty, you deal with it in the same way. It is a behavior that your principal, your system principal, your dean will work together with the family, with the student, and with the teachers, say, okay, what are our next steps moving forward and deal with it as a behavior. So really the grades are going to reflect your level of being able to accomplish the, the standards in the, in the class, not your making poor choices. You will have a consequence for that.
So that goes to the administrators, the teacher doesn't deal with that. And then the grade, eventually they get some grade for some formative or summative evaluation they, they do honestly.
So we actually have a policy and a regulation that talks about academic dishonesty and it's under student contact. It's 3240 that would outline the steps. What Josh is mentioning is there's a recognition that a child sometimes maybe, each step would be, the first step is what happened is an awareness. What is that continuum of dishonesty? Did I not wear? And I'll open the door even further, Director Leon, with AI, artificial intelligence. What is dishonesty?
Chat GPT.
And, and so it is a, we are entering a new world. What we're trying to do is with this is, is use this as a learning tool and opportunity. And so if a student is blatantly copying another student and theirs, they would have to, in just layman's terms, simple pieces, they would have 10 days to demonstrate, to retake it. There may be behavior for held accountable that's not relation to their grade based on the situation. There may be discipline in that space. But it is not a penalty that behavior would not be a penalty their grade. And so many cases, that would have been an automatic zero, you fail the class. That's maybe how we grew up. This would be a start of a conversation in that place between the teacher, the student, the administrator, the student. But policy 3240 under conduct and the regulation would outline some of those. What does that mean?
Good. I've heard other folks being concerned about the attendance, not counting, obviously, where you're great. And I just, there, I'm curious, what has happened in other districts when attendance hasn't counted? I've heard from some districts that folks aren't showing up as often and maybe they're still learning. So has that been in a, is there evidence of that happening in other districts that have had this happen, a big rise in kids not going to school?
Every district has a different policy, different implementation of that. And so where districts have moved away from is a required number of days to sit in order to pass. So back in the early 2000s, for example, there was a movement in education that if you miss more than 10 days, you automatically fail the class. And that was a, a real push in Washington State and others. And so that pendulum has then shifted to say, so how is that evidence-based learning? And actually, the Washington State legislators rewrote legislation around evidence-based learning, mastery-based learning. And so you're hearing a lot of narrative right now around different pathways around mastery-based learning, that seat time is not required for mastery-based learning. There are some safeguards in here, in this space. So if a student continues to miss school, these are unexcused absences, they only have so much time to make up the work, miss up that work. There is encouragement and we have interventions around trying to encourage students to attend. So our attendance policy has not changed in that space. But one district, what they hear anecdotally, I haven't seen any evidence of reports about the relationships of attendance to grades.
Okay. The not dropping more than one letter grade for one assignment, what happens when they're at a 92% or 90% for an A and that one test brings them to 89? That is one letter grade. Is that, is that not going to happen or is it two letter grades? We're talking about an A to a C?
Letter grades, not plus and minus. So if you had a B, he couldn't go down to a D.
Okay. So that's two letter grades, but that's considered one letter grade?
More than one letter grade.
More than one letter grade, which is skipping the one in the middle. Okay, that makes sense. It's not intuitive, but, so maybe that just needs to be clarified for the public to...
A lot of this will, it will continue to be, make meaning, right? So sometimes you read this for the first time and you haven't had a chance to practice it, what does that look like? And so that's where Director McElroy is very, is wise in saying, let's really talk about what are the implementations? And the more that we talk about this, the more that it will become part of our culture.
Good. Yeah, these would be the kind of questions that parents have had for me already. So I think, I think you'll probably already have them in your FAQs or whatever. No fails without a notice, with, with, with time to improve for the parents, with time to improve. If they're, the final exam causes them to fail, there's just scenarios around that where it sounds like there's no time there to give improvement if it's the last test. But the intent is to get kids and families understanding that maybe they're not doing as well, get them to improve. So is there any details there that, you don't have to give them to me now, but for the future for families to understand?
Is that going to roll out in the communications unlike slide number six? That's a part of that?
Say that last part again, please.
On the slide, I don't know the exact number, I just have it in front of me. That's the next steps in communication. So will those questions be answered in the family and student support? We working, we are working on a communication department, on a communication plan to share out at the start of the school year.
Correct.
And so these will be answered?
I don't know what all these are yet, but that was the intent of these questions in that spirit is, is just that. And so in that situation is, remember the intent here is that, and there are multiple tools and I want to be very clear here is teachers have tools that we currently have. And some of these tools may, some may not say are effective, but it is important to recognize that they play a role. One of those tools is when you get a phone call as a parent that says your child is in danger of not passing and it's an automatic phone message. Those are important pieces that helps our educators reach out multiple times. Those are documented that we've reached out and tried because a teacher, and I'm going to use a high school teacher for example, not that that is any more complex than an elementary or middle, but as a high school teacher, doesn't have enough time in the day to make all the phone calls in every that space. And so there are a number of ways that they, we are trying to provide some supports, but the intent there, and nothing is perfect, the intent there is, is to say, hey, you can't go from a, a B to an F overnight and drop that. But then as Director Leon mentions, there are some subtleties as, well, what if the final is a D and an F? And you go there. So then there is opportunities to say, so what does that retake look like? There's policy language already around how long can a grade be extended? And those other pieces will be woven together. But these will be part of the communication suite.
So I'm looking forward to hearing about it in the fall.
There is another, the language in here around the teacher seeing if the student has put forth the effort, the definition of put forth the effort, that could be very subjective, not really objective. So that may be different in each classroom. So I don't think there's a definition, black and white of what enough effort is, but that might need to be delineated somehow in each class or what might be the plan for that?
Teachers would say to a student, here's the evidence that I need to see of the work. I need you to do this worksheet, for example, take notes as we do this. I need to see your Cornell notes that you have read this material. That would be a practical example of that. And we can go through these each one by one right now, or we can get those as a FAQ and we can put those in the FAQ. It's whatever works best for you. These are questions that will come, the regulation has been adopted. And so as we make meaning, these are very important conversations that we all share and demystify, but we'll have to archive these in a manner.
So it sounds to me like this is something you're working on, that we're planning to do an FAQ in September. And I think what you're bringing forth, Director Leon, are more of the individual case by case basis situations. And so...
And to be included in the FAQs, that the full community is aware of.
To eliminate the confusion coming to begin.
So I bring them up because this is what my constituents have asked me to bring forth today.
So rather than going through a list of options, maybe we could, you could provide the superintendent with that list of questions and then the DART team could work on including those in the FAQs.
We can definitely have a part of that internal page, like we said, part of the communication process and the implementation to make sure that every single section and subsection of the regulation is part of that process. We're working on it currently. And many of the questions that you brought up, I think are great ones and we'll make sure that we have that ironed out. And there are some questions as far as when it comes to professional judgment. We have professional educators that are assigning and grading work and they are professional educators and we're going to make sure that they have all the tools they need to make sure this happens.
Okay. And the last one I have is that can, some folks want to know if homework can be retaken or redone too.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Great. Okay. So thank you, Josh.
Can we get a copy of those questions for you to ensure that, that would be helpful?
And then I still have a little more.
Oh, oh.
Okay. And then so staff education, you mentioned the website and support. So is some of this also maybe in-person, small groups, teachers that are more experienced, helping each other, I presume?
Yes, that's my team.
Okay.
Yeah. And our team has coaches.
Yes.
And we are out in the buildings and we go out and make sure we're working with PLCs, we work with the whole staff. We will ensure that each of the schools are supported, principals, instructional coaches, and the teachers when it comes to grading practices. That's, we know that's our lift.
We all know that, but I think it's important that the public knows that too. Okay, thank you.
And I want to add, there's coaches inside of buildings.
Yes.
And so that many of the things that you're talking about are, are elements of professional development. How would I do this effectively and efficiently if I'm an educator? And that's the resources that we try to provide inside the buildings as well. So it is not just the DART team's responsibility, it's all of our responsibility. And so if any educator's out there that's asking those questions, those are great questions. Reach out to the curriculum instruction team, reach out to your instructional coach, reach out to your principal. And if you get any pushback on that, then let me know and we'll provide some additional supports. Josh mentioned a number of different evidence-based books of why these things, but not only the whys, how is the technology helping? whys, how is the technology helping you on the hows, and what does that look like? Now, if there's a philosophical piece that is a struggle for an educator, that's where you have already made a decision around policy and regulation. And so that's, that's a different conversation. Those, at this point is, is you would have to change your policy and redirect us at that point, uh, if it was a philosophical. But there's always ways that we can help our folks try to implement these practices. And we are committed to doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, that sounds great. Any other questions, comments? All right, thanks, Josh, and we appreciate it to the team. All right, item number eight, we just finished that. Item number nine, staff report to the board, we have none this evening. Um, so we are on to members of the public wishing to address the board, which is item number ten. So, um, I will say that, start with the written comment, we have three individuals, well, one individual has written two different letters, but we have had three, uh, individuals submit letters, which we all had a chance to look at prior to this meeting. And the other option for communicating with the board is, um, an in-person here tonight. And, um, so I'm gonna turn it over to General Counsel, who will explain the process and encourage folks that are here to come forward and speak to the board.
Yes. Public comment proceeds under Board Policy fourteen-thirty, and under Board Policy fourteen-thirty, the Board President may interrupt and/or terminate comments when the speaker exceeds the time allotted, or when comments are abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. You can find a summary of Board Policy fourteen-thirty on the front and back of the blue comment card, and you can find the full text on our website at tacomaschools.org. So tonight, we have six verbal comments, um, and starting right away, first one is by Tui Nguyen. Thank you.
You repeat your name, and then we have the three-minute, which Tracy's gonna bore you, so, thank you.
Hi, my name is Teng Nguyen, and I'm here today as a community member and as an organizer with the People's Assembly, to declare our full support of the renaming of McCarver Elementary. While renaming McCarver Elementary is not a replacement for justice, it is a necessary disruption to the whitewashing of the history that precedes and continually informs our world today. It is a critical step towards reckoning with the psychological and cultural violence that is perpetuated when any place, especially a school, bears the name of a significant actor of white supremacy. This violence is exacerbated with every call against renaming, under the guise of preserving history. Let us remember that every day, students of color, and particularly Black students, are subject to the reminders of systematic racism, both past and present. The enshrinement of public spaces in the names of oppressors, at the very least, serves as an endorsement of oppression, and at the very most, it is a celebration of such oppression. With that, I vocalize my enthusiastic support at the renaming of McCarver Elementary to Edna Travis Elementary. I understand the board has been appraised by Dr. Travis's life and legacy, so I won't be redundant by recalling the many examples of a tremendous impact in the city, and especially in the neighborhood of Hilltop. What I will say is that names have power, and the act of naming is a powerful act, one that was revoked from enslaved Africans, brought to this stolen land, when parents could not name their own children because that power was reserved for the white man. In this motion to rename McCarver Elementary, let not another man or system of white supremacy hold the authority to select a name for a school, where a diversity of children learn and grow. Let the people who have bore the brunt of erasure and racism be heard. Let the school bear the name of an honorable ancestor chosen by the community she has shaped. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Helen Babin.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Helen Babin, and, um, I would like to, um, express my support for renaming McCarver to Dr. Edna Travis. I have been in education for over forty years in five different districts across, um, the country and outside of this country. And I understand the importance of a name. It, um, inspires, it gives hope, it brings, it helps our scholars and our school community see themselves windows, we're always talking about windows and mirrors in education. And renaming Dr. Edna Travis and McCarver in the Hilltop, and for me, I've been living in the Hilltop, I'm a resident of Hilltop for over twenty years, really lends itself to being window and, and mirrors for our scholars and for our community. Dr. Edna Travis, she was a woman of God first, and what does that mean? That means that you build community, that you serve people, that you love people. Um, she served homeless people, had her soup kitchen, did prison ministry, and also she is a current role model for our scholars. For our scholars, first, our scholars of color, our African-American scholars, and our scholars, our white scholars, who can see what, that, the inspiration and the importance of community and people of color bring to our society. So I would really, um, I really think it's important to have more people like Edna Travis in our communities, and that we uphold them, we see them for the heroes that they are, and that the way that we do that is by naming schools after them, and, and have that inspiration, and being able to hold their memories, and all of the things that they have done in their lives. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Robert Penton.
Madam President, and members of the Tacoma School Board, I want to first say good evening. I am Reverend Robert Penton, a member of the Name Change Committee, and a community leader, minister for more than five decades in our city. I am here this evening to, to comment on the late Dr. Edna E. Travis, who I consider an extraordinary and exemplary leader, who humbly served the Hilltop and the greater Tacoma community. Dr. Travis was a woman of prayer, faith, purpose, and hope. Her faith was in her compassion and actions, which was to improve the quality of life, especially for the unrepresented in the Hilltop community. It, it did not deter her whether she were, whether you were gay or straight, she served everyone. It's my hope tonight that you, the Tacoma School Board, will vote yes, which is in concert with the will of the Hilltop community. In doing so, your vote will reverberate throughout the community with a shout, "We have been heard." On behalf of the Hilltop community, I thank you in advance for your consideration. Bless you.
Our next speaker is Catrisha Barker.
Good evening. I am Catrisha Barker. I am Edna, uh, Dr. Edna Travis's granddaughter. I live in Houston, Texas. I am the owner of, a franchise owner of Godfather's Pizza, there in, uh, Texas, Houston, Texas. Um, we also own a, a couple of other businesses. And I thought it was important that I get on a plane and come here and let you guys know how my grandmother, uh, impacted the world. I am the eldest grandchild, um, and she has not only had a great impact on me, but, like I said, a great impact on the world. I lived overseas in Korea, and I was just telling someone that I was shopping in the commissary, and someone said to me, or screamed across the commissary, "Dr. Travis's granddaughter." So, with that being said, fifty-six hundred miles away from home, uh, her life definitely shined bright. Um, not only was she all about including everyone, she was all about diversity, she was all about making sure that each person had a fair chance here in society, whether you were white, black, purple, green, it didn't matter. Uh, she would pick you up off of the streets and feed you, and make sure that no one, you know, was left feeling alone. We, many times during Christmas and, uh, Thanksgiving, we'd have people sitting at our dinner table that we didn't know, just because she was all about community and making sure that no one would sit at a dinner table alone. Um, so with that being said, we would really appreciate and the community would benefit by the name change of the school being named after her. Thank you.
All right. Our last speaker on this topic is Joe Bowman.
Madam Chair and Board of Directors, Superintendent, thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to again say, please consider renaming, um, the school to Edna Travis Elementary. Um, I am her oldest and most handsome grandson. I'm gonna set the record straight. Um, Dr. Travis, a mother, pastor, humanitarian, she forged to build a community in the name of dignity, honor, and human kindness. She journeyed from a gin crow south, Hattiesburg, Mississippi, and at fifteen years old, had a train ticket to Chicago. And then, being married to her, the love of her life, migrated to Tacoma through the military. And as a result of that, she continued to do the work that she had done for so many years. All of us here tonight, this behind me, if you're here to support this initiative, I want you to stand and say, "I am Dr. Travis." So even though we know her remains are a mountain view, the reality is, we still live the legacy that she set forward for us. She loved her role as a mother and a nurse at Madigan Hospital, in the nursery, supporting newborn babies. And in nineteen eighty-five, I was about this size, I was twelve years old, and I was living with her on Sixteenth and M Street, and she had made liver and onions. Now, I want to make this real for you. That's one of the best meals she could ever make. Somebody said, "Liver doesn't taste good." Yes, it does, when she made it. And that meal she prepared, she brought that meal, and she gathered it, and we came in front of the church at twenty-one fifty-six MLK. In those days, it was K Street. And exactly what she prepared was what was needed for the family that was sitting in front of that church. That night, those folks were invited inside, they had a wonderful meal, and their lives were better because of it. Every single day, Monday through Friday, she continued that, just until two thousand and twenty, that meal service was there for folks of all colors, all people, all ideas, all religions. She never despised anyone for where they were. Nineteen eighty-eight, Hilltop was a drug-infested, gang-infested place. She stood outside of that church when the Crips and the Bloods would walk through, and the police were scared to stop. She would stand out front and say, "Lord, I thank you for my community." She would turn to the taverns on both sides of the street and say, "You're going to close, but Lord, don't affect the business owners' pockets. Make sure they stay successful, but close the taverns." She knew that it would be full of mixed-family income, it would be mixed-family, uh, housing, and it is to this day, because that's the community she prayed for. I have two seconds, and I thank you.
All right. Our last speaker this evening is Heidi Van Harper.
I can't follow that, I so support that. My name is Heidi Van Harper, and, um, I am a twenty-three-year certified K-A teacher who has taught in four different states across the country. And what I'm finding, uh, that's being taught here, is that teen girls don't want to be girls anymore. Why are so many kids feeling that their body is in conflict with their brain? Why are educators worrying unnecessarily about normal childhood behaviors that ninety-nine percent of kids will grow out of? I'm struck by how many girls want to be identified as they, or he. In one seventh-grade classroom, fourteen of my students out of ninety-six wanted to be identified as something other than a girl. The last straw was when my fourth-grade son came home with a report, report card that was entirely written in they pronouns. He doesn't have gender dysphoria. What is happening to the kids here? So I researched. I don't like reading about John Money, who we base the idea that sex and gender are two different things. Learn about David Reimer's suicide and John Money's abuse. Learn about the term cisgender. German sexologist Volgmar Seguch, a known pedophile. Yet schools now teach, including first through third graders, see your curriculum using the book Jamie and Bubby, that gender is malleable and disconnected from one's sex, or the flash sex ed curriculum, which separates the category of sexual orientation and gender identity. In June, I attended a workshop offered from the Puget Sound Service District about LGBTQ inclusivity in schools. It was stated as a fact that gender-affirming care reduces suicide rates, or puberty blockers have been used in cisgender teens for decades and have been proven to reduce suicidal ideation in trans youth. I thought this was great news, until I read the fine print and directly read the research studies. Quote, "Dr. Turbin reports receiving textbook royalty pavements, payments from Springer Nature." Quote, "Dr. Kerrigan stands to receive future textbook royalty payments from McGraw-Hill Education." Quote, "There's a paucity of data." Pausity, meaning meager? That's not a word you want to read in any conclusion of a study. Or quote, "Lack of standardized questionnaires." It was also taught in the workshop, teachers don't need to tell the parents about kids' pronouns. Follow the rabbit hole. There's a pamphlet on the OSPI website. So let me understand this. A student who is underage, can't vote, can't smoke, can't legally drive, get an ID or drink, watch porn, is not allowed to see NC seventeen movies or video games, and by law can't even get a job, can change their name and pronouns without parental consent? Seriously? I can't, I can't agree to teach contradictory, inconclusive information from unreliable biased research.
Okay, thank you.
Tone down the pronouns. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, that concludes verbal public comment for night.
Thank you, General Counsel. All right. That concludes the public hearing part of this meeting. Moving on to item number eleven.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to seconded. Um, any comments or questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five-zero. Item number twelve, policy matters. We have no policy matters this evening. Item thirteen, financial report. Um, the district's next quarterly financial report is planned for August twenty-fourth, when in fact, we will adopt the, uh, budget that we heard the hearing of on today. Uh, if you're interested in our monthly financial statements, they can be found at our district website, um, at HTTPS colon slash slash WWW tacomaschools.org backslash departments backslash business and finance. All right. Item number fourteen, curriculum and instruction. Fourteen-point-one, approval of the contract, TSD dash seventeen dash zero-zero-seven, addendum number eleven, to purchase iReady reading learning application for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have to use my broken glasses tonight, excuse me. The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, which I am behalf of here tonight, obviously, I'm not Zeke.
I was gonna say, Zeke, you've changed.
Um, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of iReady reading learning application for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, in the amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars. Application for the 2023-24 school year in the amount of $292,843.16, inclusive of sales tax and shipping. Funding source, CNI.
Thank you. You have a motion?
I move to adopt item 14.1.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Thank you. Item 14.2, approval of contract TSD-22-196, addendum number 1, to purchase Synergy MTSS and Synergy Analytics for the 2023-2024 school year.
The Director of DART, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommend the Board of Directors approve the purchase of Synergy Multi-Tier Systems and Supporter MTSS and Synergy Analytics for the 23-24 school year in the amount of $246,145 funding source tech.
I move to adopt item 14.2.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this particular item, which we've discussed a little bit tonight already? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number 15.3.
Point, point one.
Hang on a second. All right. Let's see, now we're going to go back. 15.1, sorry. Business matters, 15.1, approval to award the contract to Meadowsweet Farms Incorporated from B23O2OB Dairy and Juice Products. And here comes Morris.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors award the contract for dairy and juice products to Meadowsweet Farms, Inc., and authorize the Superintendent to award the contract for the period of August 1st, 2023, to July 31st, 2028. Funding source, nutritional service budget.
I move to adopt item 15.1.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or question on this item? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Item 15.2, approval of the bid acceptance for the Hunt Round Building remodel and site improvement project.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors accept the bid for Hunt Round Building remodel and site improvement project for Christian General Contractors in the amount of $1,850,000. Excludes sales tax, funding source, 2020 capital bond.
I move to adopt item 15.2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on this one? Director Leon.
Yeah, just the round building, will it stay as a theater? Just a long-term plan?
It's still, still will be a theater. We're doing some upgrades within the theater itself and just making the building more accessible and doing some upgrades that are sorely needed.
So there's, for those that are out there, it is not solely for theater use, it is a community asset. So if you are out there and would like to use the round building, there is a facility use, but it does not have to be just for theater items.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Passes 5-0. Item 15.3, approval to award Titan Earthwork the bid for the demolition of Central Administration Annex Building located right there.
The Executive Director, the Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Superintendent to award the bid to Titan Earthwork for the demolition of the building located at 708 South G Street, Tacoma, Washington, 98405, in parking lot design. The total award is for $224,346, excluding sales tax. Funding source, 2020 capital bond.
I move to approve item 15.3.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Questions on this item? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Morris, we have it 5-0. Item 15.4, approval of the amendment of the Superintendent's contract. And as the President of the Board of Directors, I recommend the Board ratify the attached amended contract with Superintendent Garcia effective immediately, July 13, 2023. And what we have here is the Superintendent's got a three-year contract which rolls over every year, and he has not asked for an increase and of any kind in the past couple of years since he's been Superintendent. And so we have discussed it with him, and he has, we are awarding the Superintendent the same 1% increase that all of the administrative and exempt staff in the district get, the cabinet level and exempt staff are getting a 1% increase along this year, and the Superintendent, we are now offering him that same 1%. So does anybody have any questions? Well, actually, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 15.4.
Second. Do we, anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to General Counsel to call the roll.
Absolutely. President Bomber, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice President Stroger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Keating, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director McElroy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Leon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So, thank you for the passes 5-0. And I would just like to take this opportunity to say that we are so grateful to you, Superintendent Garcia, for the work that you put in, day in, day out, 24/7. I mean, you don't even, I mean, on vacation, you're not on vacation. So I just appreciate this year. One of the things we just completed is evaluation, and one of the things we were talking about is the things that are just above and beyond that make Tacoma so special. The innovative work, the investment in his time in community building, things like, you know, he was the inspiration for the late nights that were happening right now in the summer and within eight, you know, just six short weeks, was able to raise the money and turn it around and get it up and running. I mean, these are the kinds of things that are one-of-a-kind Superintendent that we have here. Also, for those that are listening that may not have been aware, just, was it last month? Too much, time flies. But he was invited to go back to speak before the U.S. Senate Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions Committee, which is an extremely powerful committee and where all of our funding comes through for schools. And he was the only local Superintendent that was invited to speak, and he literally blew them away. So I just have to say that we are very lucky to have Superintendent Garcia, and as Board members, we know that every single day, and we hope that you and the community know that as well.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to work with such an amazing team. You and all of our staff and community partners, I am extremely grateful and humbled at the opportunity. I appreciate you. Thank you.
All right. So, other business. We are going to move on to the next exciting item on the agenda, which is 16.1, the approval to rename McCarver Elementary School to Edna Travis Elementary School.
I move to adopt item 16.1.
I second. And I have a comment.
Okay. Well, let's go through the process first. It's been approved, I mean, it's been moved and seconded, so I appreciate that. Now.
Yeah. So I wanted to take the time from the dais to address the heart of McCarver and what it was and what it will be when it changes to Edna Travis Elementary School. I know that we have to have a vote, but I'm saying that with, I will vote in favor of changing the name because of her heart and her passion for community. I feel that often in community, it's terrifying to put yourself in front of people and tell them your truth, because as soon as they know who you are, they target you. And I think erroneously, Dr. Travis has been labeled a bigot, labeled a malicious person. The attacks on her character are something that haunt me because of all of her good work and her good deeds. I'm someone who follows in her footsteps and does good works and good deeds. What will I be labeled when I'm dead? I really appreciate everyone on the naming committee. I appreciate every member of community who's reached out to me. I appreciate everyone who knows my true story. I was born and raised in the church in Hilltop. I'm not a bigot. She was not a bigot. And that's why I will vote, to change the name. And in Tacoma, we don't tolerate bigotry, and we don't attack others for their identities. And I appreciate everyone on this board, because that's what we believe in. That's my comment.
Thank you, Director McElroy. Anybody else have comments on this?
Sorry, Cory.
Vice President Stroger?
I have no comment.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So for those who, well, I should turn it over to the Superintendent to go through. We didn't go through the process of how we got to this point.
I think we should officially state some of the agenda items. So the Superintendent recommends the Board of Directors rename Morton M. McCarver Elementary School to Edna Travis Elementary School. I would like to thank the community and the renaming community. They put in a lot of time, there were a lot of efforts. I know there was a lot of discussions. I am proud of their recommendation. I support their recommendation. It is an important recommendation and opportunity, and so I hope you consider our recommendation.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. We had one comment. I would like to say that we've heard a great deal from the community, pro and con, mostly pro, almost exclusively pro, but we really appreciate the community and the family that's here today to rise her up and celebrate her in ways that I can only, I'm only excited for when our schoolchildren, our elementary schoolchildren, at, if we vote on this, that they'll learn about this amazing woman that served so nobly in the community in which they live. So for all those in favor of renaming McCarver Elementary, Edna Travis Elementary, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Let it be so. So, so since, since the entire family seems to be here, do you guys want to come up and have a photo with the Board? Come on up.
Oh, that was a yes and no. I heard both.
Okay. Well, you don't have to, but those of you that want to, we would be honored to do, to have a photo with you. Come on, guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, here's how it's going to go. We're going to squeeze in, you're really friendly. If you don't feel comfortable, it's okay. We're going to pass the votes that are remaining.
Lucky's directed fire. He's directed fire.
That will help. I cannot see you. You are not in the picture. She may ask you to do that real quick. We want to turn to Tanisha.
Hi, ma'am.
We're going to say, "Edna."
Edna. Thank you.
Thank you. I will make sure Tanisha gets it and sees it. Yes, I will work on it.
We're the lessens of grandchildren. Are they out here giving you a hard time?
You should have seen Laura's face. She's like, "So."
Okay. So thank you to Edna Travis's family and friends for being here and making this a celebratory moment. We will all see you in September, when we, or whenever we get to the renaming physical part. All right. So moving on to 17, board comments and reports. And I'm going to actually start tonight, because I have, I have something to share, which is pretty exciting, and it's, we talked about it a little bit earlier when Rosalind was talking about the budget and how there are different funding streams, like scholarships and things that help our students. And so I have an announcement about a scholarship that has already been given out to six of our high school students, and it's the MiCentro David Almonte Scholarship. And actually, David Almonte was a friend of mine, so I really, I'm so pleased every year when the family, he passed, he passed quite young, unfortunately, and left a family that's still in mourning, I think. And Lisa Almonte is his wife, and she worked with MiCentro to make sure that his legacy continued, the good work he did in community continued. And they have this scholarship, and so six outstanding Tacoma graduates received $2,000 each and are going to be celebrated at an award ceremony on July 19th at 6:00 p.m. at MiCentro. And I'm going to read the names of the recipients, because we are so proud of them. They are recent grads. And Stephon Pugh from Lincoln High School, Lauren Scheit-Padrone from Lincoln High School, Teraz Cantante from Mount Tahoma, Jasmine DiSantiago from Mount Tahoma, Natalie Rabati-Larrena from Stadium High School, and Carol Rangel from Stadium High School. So I just want to say to the families out there and to Lisa Almonte and her children and her, and the rest of the family, thank you for putting together this annual award and for MiCentro for carrying it forward, and congratulations to these six students who are going to take this scholarship and put it towards their post-grad future. So very excited for that. The second thing I was going to say before we turn, turn it over to other comments is to remind the public that, I don't know if you can see this, that we have late nights, summer late nights happening in 12 different locations here in town, and we've been putting, that you should see these signs, they're everywhere, which is great. So we want, this is for middle schoolers, grades six to eight, and high schoolers, nine through 11, meaning rising seniors too, that are going to, they open from Monday through Thursday from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. These locations are places to go hang out, visit with friends, chill, just be safe. And that's the whole point. We've got community partners that we've been working with, Metro Parks, Green Trike, others who are bringing in guest speakers and dinner, free dinner, for everyone that comes. And we really want kids to join, and it's only been two and a half weeks, actually just the closing, about three weeks, I guess tonight's the end of three weeks, and we...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Monday through Friday.
Oh, it's Monday through Friday. Sorry. My mistake. Monday through Friday. And it's, tomorrow is the end of three weeks, and we have had over 761 separate kids registered to drop, the drop-in situation, but to join, and it's, and we're getting more and more every day. So thank you to the families, and Superintendent has something more to say.
I just want to say we had six more since we talked, and so we're up to 767 individual TPS students that have registered and attended at least once.
So exciting. And, and we've still got, what, seven more weeks of summer? So there's plenty of time to access this, and if you want to know anything about it, just go to our website. And parents, you can just sign your students up, and once they're signed up, they can just drop in any night they want. So it is very exciting. And thanks to all of our community partners that made this happen, and they're making it happen every single night, keeping our kids off the street and safe. And, and for Pierce Transit, who's been working to make the bus routes align and just, you know, it's just, the community has really stepped up to help reduce youth violence in our community, and this is, we're very proud to be part of this. So I, and then the only other thing, I have one more thing to say, and what was it? Nope, I think that's it. So we're good. So who else wants to talk, share? Vice President Stroger is pushing his button.
Yeah, pushing the button. On July 6th, this is just feeding off of the teen late nights. On July 6th, Vice President Cory Stroger, he/him.
And that's the whole point. We've got community partners that we've been working with, Metro Parks, GreenTric, others who are bringing in guest speakers and dinner, free dinner for everyone that comes. And we really want kids to join. And it's only been two and a half weeks. Actually, just the closing, about three weeks. I guess tonight's the end of three weeks. And we.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay, tomorrow's.
Monday through Friday.
Oh, it's Monday through Friday. Sorry, my mistake. Monday through Friday. And it's, tomorrow is the end of three weeks. And we have had over 761 separate kids registered to drop, the drop-in situation, but to join. And we're getting more and more every day. So thank you to the families. And Superintendent has something more to say.
I just want to say we had six more since we talked. So we're up to 767 individual TPS students that have registered and attended at least once.
So exciting. And we've still got, what, seven more weeks of summer? So there's plenty of time to access this. And if you want to know anything about it, just go to our website. And parents, you can just sign your students up. And once they're signed up, they can just drop in any night they want. So it is very exciting. And thanks to all of our community partners that made this happen, and they're making it happen every single night, keeping our kids off the street and safe. And for Pierce Transit, who's been working to make the bus routes align and just, you know, it's just, the community has really stepped up to help reduce youth violence in our community. And this is, we're very proud to be part of this. So I, and then the only other thing, I have one more thing to say. And what was it? Nope, I think that's it. So we're good. So who else wants to talk, share? Vice President Stroger is pushing his button.
Yeah, pushing the button on July 6th. This is just speeding off of the teen late nights. On July 6th, Vice President Cory Stroger, he/him, and Christina Walker, Deputy Mayor, and Lori Jenkins. Well, Lori Jenkins and I, Speaker of the House, we able to hit the East Side, the Shalashan Community, and doorbell for teen late nights. And it was amazing how many folks opened the door and said, I got an email. I just, I just heard about that. I'll take a flyer. I can send my kids wind? Can I send them to night? So it was beautiful. Like, so the word is getting out there. Folks are attending. Kids are having fun. And that's the most important thing, other than obviously staying safe. So hats off to everybody, all of our partners who have joined in to get the word out, to provide the spaces, to bring in food. It's a beautiful thing, man. So this is a great effort. It looks like it's working out. And I'm glad that the word is being spread because literally every door that I knocked on that was answered, someone had already known about this opportunity and had their kids participating in it. So that's all I had to share.
Yeah. Also meant to say the Boys and Girls Club and the Y. It's just, it's a really, it's a big community lift. So thank you. Anyone, okay, who's next? Is that it? Director Stroger, did you have anything else you wanted? Okay. Director McElroy?
Yes. So taking off board hat, putting on preschool teacher hat. It is summertime and your children under five years old need about two ounces of water per, like, the age that they are, or something like that. I almost get it wrong, but I had it right at parent-teacher conference yesterday. Either or. So if they're two, they need about 12 ounces of water. So it's six times two, because they're two. And then six times three, if they're three. There's just a lot of dehydration going around in the younger, younger children this time of year. And I got an email just reminding me that we need to be telling parents. So from this seat, I'm gonna tell more parents and probably your older children too. The only reason I'm speaking about the youngers is because I think their parents are newer to the game. So they might need the reminder. The older ones, you guys got it. I have faith in you. Please hydrate your children this summer. And if you're looking for things or places to cool down, all the splash parks are open. At Metro Parks, you can go to their website and find them. And it's really nice to drive by and hear the kids just like screeching and wailing and squealing. Oh, I'm getting all the summer feels. Every time I leave work, I get to drive past two. So yeah, please hydrate your children. And if you're looking for places to cool down, the splash grounds, they're really good for that. That's it.
Perfect.
And that water's cold.
It's super exciting.
I don't remember it being that cold when I was little, but I know it was the same temperature. So that's cold.
So Director Keating?
I just want to say that on, so in Tacoma, we have a tradition of starting Pride in July, after National Pride at the end of June. And that's really, was started over, gosh, at least 25 years ago so that there wasn't competing interests, so that families and people that wanted to go to the big city Pride festivals they could. So what started out at Wright Park, out in the park a long, long time ago, has turned into a huge street festival that happened. The Pride flag raising on City Hall happened Friday evening and the Pride Awards were given out. It was just like always really meaningful and beautiful to get together with community and those that are serving and have contributed. And then Saturday was the all-day Pride Festival. And there were over 20,000 people that attended, which is even bigger than, every year we say, oh my gosh, it's bigger than it was last year. So, and the thing that I'm always moved by is there is an opportunity or a point where elected officials are invited to come on stage. And Speaker of the House Lori Jenkins and current County Council Member Ryan Mello, they had started this tradition of inviting elected officials to come to Pride. And when they first started, or when Speaker Jenkins started, no elected official would come. And now, there were about 40 of us packed on stage, which made me a little nervous, just for like being that many people on stage. And what I think was even more remarkable this year is we had our congressional leaders, we had state legislators, we had county council members, city council members, and from multiple cities throughout Pierce County. We also had our Hark Commissioners, several were there. Port Commissioners were there. And over half a dozen of our judicial, our judges were also present. And the purpose of it is to demonstrate a commitment to the inclusivity and safety and the rights and dignity of LGBTQ people in Pierce County and across the state as elected officials. And so it's always a really special thing to be a part of. And just seeing everyone gathered together was really meaningful. And so I just wanted to say like, you know, it's just a really beautiful thing to see people and families just fill the streets of downtown Tacoma. And the photographs always get me even more so afterwards. So it's a really beautiful event and a beautiful side of Tacoma.
Thank you. All right, Director Leon, do you have anything?
Okay.
Cool. All right. Well, that then conclude, oh, announcements of our next board meetings are August 24th, 2023. And then we start up in September. And we have a retreat on August 30th as well. But then September 14th, and again on September 28th. And school will be fully in session by then, so.
I know, we don't need to go.
Seems like the summer just flew by. Anyway. Okay, it's still hot. All right, so that's that. And so we are now officially adjourned until August 24th. Stay safe, everyone, and stay cool.
Great job, directors.
Thank you.